KJZ FM and HD1 Long Beach, Los Angeles. This is KJAS 88.1. KJZ FM and HD1 Long Beach, Los Angeles. This is KJAS 88.1, a service of California State University, Long Beach.
A good Monday evening to you. This is Steve Tyrell on KJAS and still reeling from that great game yesterday. We're going to start off this 7:00 PM hour with the great Ella Fitzgerald and Pops Louis Armstrong with a foggy day.
I was a stranger in this city. Out of town where the people I knew. I had that feeling of self pity. What to do? What to do? What to do?
Good evening. Welcome to the City of Seal Beach City Council Meeting, February 8th, 2016. We'll call the meeting to order. And Mike Verapape, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yeah, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is we are the United States of America and in the Republic for which it stands, one nation and no other, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Council roll call, please.
Mayor Masaryevic.
Here.
May I approach him, Verapape?
Here.
Councilmember Deaton.
Here.
Councilmember Sloan.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
All present?
Thank you. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Yeah, I'd like to poll. Agenda item D is in dog and E is in echo.
Anyone else? Okay. This is the time for oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Good. Scott?
Hello, Arnold Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here representing, boy, I'm so tall. I'm here representing the Lions Club and I've got here with me two distinguished lifeguard here in Seal Beach and amazing competitors. We were made aware of some disrepair of some of the competition surf boat, dory boats, and so the Lions want to be part of an event that we're planning in the future here very shortly. I think we set the date as the 12th, but we have to go through all the logistics of that to help raise funds. And the Lions will do a match of a significant amount towards the Seal Beach Lifeguard Association. But we have Austin Trinkle and we have Jack Boyke here. And I don't know if you're aware, but they've been spurred in the Catalina Dory Competition and did extremely well in the Hines Beach Competition last summer. And a little history on the dory or surf boats. I mean, this is the means way back that you went out to the sea to make significant work histories, I would say. Because now with all the powerized boats and so on and so forth, it's a little bit different. But because of the commitment to not only physical, mental, and all the coordination efforts of dory competitions and the other lifeguard competitions, it's all in the same vein of, you know, getting prepared for main safety, safety, beach safety issues. And with that, I just wanted to agree so real quickly, Austin and Mr. Boyke.
Hi. So, yeah, the Seal Beach Lifeguard Association is going to be partnering with the Lions Club to put on this fundraiser to help raise funds, to make some one-time repairs to our dory boat and some one-time upgrades. And what we're going to do that is by a horseshoe tournament. And so we're going to be hopefully having a horseshoe tournament on the sand coming up on March 12th. So we're in the process of planning that and we'll be submitting permits to make that possible. And that's pretty much it. Scott said it all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And congratulations on your win.
Our goal is four thousand.
Okay. All right. Good.
The main thing we're trying to repair is our trailer, the dory trailer. There are handful of things, but that's the biggest ticket item because it's hardly safe enough to go on the street. And so it really needs to be replaced.
Thank you for all your effort.
Madam Mayor, tonight?
Chief Bailey.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, these guys are training extremely hard for this event and they have been for over a year. They're there in the early mornings before work, after work. And the dory, it's not a real easy event. You have to be coordinated with your partner and it's just, it's a real difficult event and these guys have really made a big commitment. I'm actually expecting a national championship from them this summer, so I'm going to quote that. They've been training that hard and then we're excited to host a fundraiser.
No pressure.
No. High expectations.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff of Robert Goldberg, Seal Beach. I'd like to speak to item D tonight, which is the quarterly report on the city's managers' authorized contracts. The report presents three contracts under the $28,800 limit that she has for spending without prior council approval. This is the second of her reports. And one of the things it mentions on the second page is that staff will be working on coming up with a uniform policy or comprehensive policy regarding procurement guidelines that cover all the resolutions, city charter, municipal codes sections regarding bidding and purchasing, et cetera. And I think I support that. I think that's a very good idea and I think it's consistent with what I understood Councilman Miller to have asked at the last council meeting. What I'd like to ask tonight is that you give staff direction that this policy discuss lowering the city manager's threshold from $28,800 to some lower figure, perhaps $10,000 or $15,000. It was almost exactly a year ago in February of 2015 that I and many of my neighbors came before you. And what we were concerned about was the fact that the city had run a $66,000 supposedly outreach and informational campaign regarding ballot measures DD and EE in the fall of 2014. Measure DD had to do with cutting the utility tax. Measure EE put the question to the voters regarding whether the city clerk should be elected or not. That campaign involved three contracts, all of which were under the city manager's $28,800 limit, so that the public was never aware that in total that the city was spending $66,000 to run this campaign. As you know, Joyce reminds you quite frequently that as part of that campaign, two glossy mailers were sent out in October. That was part of that campaign. And the money for those contracts was never discussed at any budget meeting. The money and the contracts, excuse me, the contracts were never in the budget, never discussed publicly. I understand from comments that Councilwoman Deaton made in last June that the council was aware of the campaign. So it was not a campaign that the city manager ran on her own. Apparently somehow the council gave her directive on that without violating the Brown Act. It was not at an open session. My neighbors and I were pretty outraged that the city would spend that kind of money without the public having to comment on the appropriateness of that. And what you have, this quarterly report, it's better than nothing, but it's all retrospective. We find out from this that, you know, contracts were let and projects were done. And it's, it is better than nothing, but it's all in the past. So it doesn't afford the opportunity for the public to give you comments regarding appropriateness of that money being spent, nor the council. And just as an example, the first one on your list tonight is the payment management plan by Buckman Infrastructure. Now, that is in the budget. There's nothing surprising about it. But the fact is, is that that contract was signed back in September 24th, four and a half months ago. And all the deliverables were given to the city, at least per the contract, they were all due in December. So that's, that's all done. And in regards to the campaign, I mean, in that context, what I did is I put together a handout that I distributed to you regarding the outreach campaign on the ballot measures. How well would this quarterly reporting system have worked in retrospect? Number three contracts. The first one was this one to the ledgers group from almost $28,000. Okay, that was signed by the city manager on April 1st, 2014. And that provided for various campaign-related tasks, advising her and her staff and essentially running this campaign. If her authority had been, say, $15,000 at the time, she would have had to present that in March of 2014. And in March of 2014, there had been some discussions back in the prior of February regarding the city clerk and changing the charter. So I knew about that, but not many people did. But I'm sure many people would have questioned the appropriateness of spending almost $28,000 on an outreach campaign regarding the city clerk's position. As it was, they never had a chance to discuss that. Now, under the current system she has, this contract with the ledger for $28,000, one would have ended up on the second quarter report presented in July of 2014. By then, $16,000 would have already been spent of the 2028. The next one, the FM3 contract, which was to do a utility users' tax ballot issue survey, that was signed on June 18th. If her limit had been $15,000, that would have had to have been presented at the general council meeting. And on the same day that the budget was adopted for only $21,000. Again, this is a $22,000 contract. So I wonder strongly whether the public would have supported spending all of their budget surplus to do a ballot survey. And the second issue was that this had to do with cutting utility tax, which I've been very curious because on June 9th, at that budget meeting, the city treasurer told us that she did not recommend cutting utility tax. And so it would have been presented, a survey regarding utility tax ballot measure issues would have been on the same agenda as a budget resolution and a budget staff report time where the city treasurer was telling us not to do that. So again, please direct the city manager to have a discussion about this limit when it comes back. Thank you very much.
Joyce Ross Parquet, old town, Seal Beach. And yes. Dear neighbor, she's supposed to be my neighbor. Good evening, City Council, Mayor. Dear neighbor, cost of taxpayer is $66,000. I asked for her to resign and pay it back. So a lot of people have told me, good luck. Well, I'm trying, but still going to keep trying because there's no transparency with her. She had a good teacher in our last city council, city mayor, city manager, and the one before, Bohorsky. Because she worked for Bohorsky. Do you remember him? And then Conley. She worked for Conley. So she had some good lessons. And Councilwoman Deaton, Councilwoman Deaton said that she thought she deserved a merit pay because everything was done and she checked it, that everything, what was it? For the past year, I've carefully evaluated every email, every phone call and every communication I've received. Well, you had to communicate with me about this transparency. And now we've got the pension. We've got pension problems again. And have you heard, neighbor to neighbor in Seal Beach? Their gas bill was, what, $30? Now it's $200. Their liquor bill was $20? Now it's $100? So where is all that utility tax going to go? Who's going to benefit from that utility tax? Why do we have to keep paying and paying and we, I don't consider them doing anything for us? Councilwoman Deaton. And then on top of all of this, of no transparency, I can't believe it. Everybody's flying around up to Seattle, Washington, down to San Diego, Sacramento, and then meals. I'm going to email this to each one of you because I requested it and it's going around town. And the people are very outraged that she can go and eat and go to, where is it? The boathouse on the bay a couple of times a week. Now, what can you be discussing when you're watching the sunset drinking that's really in my benefit? What? Tell me what, city manager? What's, what's the benefit of me paying for those bills at the boathouse? Now, I don't know if this, if this comes to you, but the fortune cookie. They ship in down the fortune cookie to feed you guys, $173.81 every week? This is outrageous. So I'm going to email to every one of you. If you want to look at it, fine, but it's going around town and people are getting very annoyed that we keep paying and paying and paying and we're not getting any benefit for it again. We're getting more property tax. We're going to get more utility tax. We're going to get, we're going to get another bill for pensions. And we've got a pier out there. You should see how many people were on that pier this weekend. How many of you come around here to check it out? And it's sitting out there broken down with nobody out there to open the door or the restroom. That's outrageous. That building down there should be repaired compared to all of these meals. So, annoyed. I'm annoyed because dear neighbor promised me better things than I'm getting. I don't want the pier open. I don't want that house down there. That, that house down there is a tear down house. Why are we putting it next to the red car? And why do we have to pay for memorial on the park? I mean, that's, that's not right to remind people of the terrible things that happen. Anybody else has to have a bench and put names on it. Maybe, Councilwoman Deaton, I don't see the way you've done any benefit for any of us in Old Town. So, I'm going to get a copy. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. Yes. Ms. Parquet, could you look at those, please, at the bills and tell me where it says there cocktails on there?
What's, what's the boathouse?
Oh, here. It's a restaurant.
Boathouse on the bay. Oh, no.
Does it say there cocktails on there? Does it tell you what time of day?
No, but I'll get it. I'll ask for it because it says in one of the emails, hey, come on over here, friend. The friend. Come on over, everybody. Let's go have a drink. Looking at the sun go down. I have that. I'll get it for you.
Okay. I appreciate it because I know for sure that our finance director will not pay for alcohol. So we can, we can lay that to bed right now. There's no alcohol being paid for.
Finance director? Everybody's flying all over the place, eating everywhere? Come on.
That's not alcohol, is it? Let's stick with the alcohol. You keep saying cocktails.
I'll get, I'll ask for a copy.
Okay.
From the finance director.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on. City Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Part of the meeting this evening, a special meeting, the council met at 6:00 PM in closed session. We appreciate Dr. Goldberg catching a typo on the posted agenda and pointing it out to the city clerk. Item B was noticed as being held closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.9B like boy. It should have been 54956.9D like dog two. And as permitted by the Brown Act, I orally announced that at the beginning of the closed session for the item of anticipated litigation. Council, all council members were present for both of the items on the posted agenda. The council took no reportable action.
Thank you. City Managers' Report, Miss Ingraham.
We have no items tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Council Comments. Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I have a couple of items. One, I want to make, I noticed that in the agenda item C tonight that we had the shopping straddle, the dial-a-ride and the senior center program listed for a certain dollar amount. And as you may remember, I asked seven months ago for a staff report on that and it's still supposed to be coming. It's even becoming more important because at OCTA, we had somebody that I guess kind of violated their contract under the senior mobility program to the tune of they had to return about $80,000. And I just want to make sure that we're, we're going to be modifying the program at OCTA for the senior mobility program, or maybe not modifying it, but tightening it down more. These people are going to gambling trips to San Diego and from the senior center. And so, anyway, my original quest, I just want to know what the senior transportation program, all the, all the components of that, as well as the senior meals and the source of funds and the costs of the programs.
Sure, I'm happy to add that. I thought, I know you'd requested it several months ago, but you and I had had a conversation and I know it was removed from the tentative calendar based on that conversation, so I'm happy to bring back an informational.
Okay, I appreciate that because I think I'd be best able to represent the city. And as you know, I want to make sure that the senior mobility program, if we're using any of our money from OCTA, I want to make sure it covers the idea that we go outside our city to the doctors at Los Alamos. Okay, the other two, I assume that next council meeting, I'll have my two agenda items for the charter items and the resolution, as well as the, the question of the auditor.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. The other, the last question is, what's the status on the amplified music? I mean, I haven't heard about it in a while and it was a high priority.
Jim, do you have a brief update you can provide the council, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. If City Council can remember, several months ago, you authorized staff to go back to planning commission and vet the process of the ordinance with them. There were a couple of line items that you asked for them to take a look at. One of them was noise and whether or not there's a threshold that can be adopted. So when staff did present through a workshop, the ordinance, the draft ordinance, the planning commission did ask for staff to move ahead and solicit services of a noise consultant and bring him on board. In this case, we found someone. And to analyze the ability to establish a base threshold for noise and if it is something that we can actually measurably operate and quantify as a basis of a mitigation measure as a condition. So we're in the process of executing that contract. I'm hoping to execute that contract this week and then we will allow the consultant to move forward in that regard. So that's the status update.
Sounds awesome. I mean, we started that October of 2014 and it's been a high priority. It sounds like we start, is there going to be a quick process, Jim?
Well, Councilmember, if you recall, there were a number of meetings that we had with City Council where we were going through the entire process piece by piece because it is a lengthy process of an ordinance where we're creating something that's never been included into our municipal code. So it is a lengthy process. It's very complicated. Just the process, the ordinance itself is not complicated, is pretty simplistic. But it establishes the permitting process from step A all the way through Z, from the point that an applicant comes to the counter and requests an application for the process and the vetting process with the staff and getting to the point of an approval before the planning commission. Because originally we started, it was going to be administratively analyzed and then City Council thought through the, just through public comments and participation of the public that we should do it through the planning commission level. So that caused staff to redesign the ordinance so that we can structure it so that the reviewing body is the planning commission. So I hope to bring that to City Council quickly, but when we're establishing a base... But when we're establishing a base for noise, it takes us at least five days for us to establish noise and separate it from the typical noise that you hear if we're targeting, just for example, Main Street. So Main Street has a certain amount of traffic, a certain amount of noise that the noise monitor will have to analyze and we have to go to separate that from the potential of noise that can be included, in this case, for entertainment purposes.
But will you have to do a noise analysis for each, each individual business at once?
No, no. It's gonna be based upon accumulation of where noise is established probably from block to block in order for us to bring back something that's comprehensive and something that we can legally defend.
It sounds like the planning commission made it much more complicated than it was when it went to them.
No, if you recall, the city council had a certain number of line items for which they asked for the planning commission to take a look at and one of them was noise. So if we're gonna establish a base for noise, then we have to go through a process. It's not something that the planning commission just can say, "Establish a noise staff and that's it." I have to go through an actual vetted technical, um, process of using a consultant who specializes in engineering. And noise.
Good luck.
Thank you.
It works.
Yeah, it does work?
Yeah. It works. They'll establish a decibel level and hopefully... Pardon me?
By block?
Well, we'll see, won't we?
Mayor?
The ambient noise levels have a lot to do with it.
Mayor, if I could. Councilman Miller had requested an item, I just had commented on it. And because of his request for an item on contracting authority with respect to the municipal code, the charter and resolutions, um, that was one of the reasons we had this discussion on, um, the item that I bring to you on a quarterly basis on any contracts that I sign under my authority. So just in discussion with the city attorney, um, we're not gonna be prepared to have that at next meeting, so we're gonna have to push it out 'cause we were gonna include that as part of our proposed procurement guidelines in coming back to council. So just wanted to make that comment in just, in talking with the city attorney. We won't be ready at the next meeting.
Well, I'm gonna get to that when we get to the item D, but I didn't consider them the same thing. I, I want people in this council to understand where I'm coming from with regard to those charter provisions and that resolution. And so, I consider them two different things. Actually, oh, I don't wanna get to D till before we get to D. But we can talk about, I, I would like to see that next time because I'm going a totally different way than, you know, we'll, we'll talk about that particular resolution. We can talk about that resolution, but it can be modified later, too.
So could we just bring those three items, then? The charter, the municipal code sections and the resolutions pertinent to what he's requesting and just talk about it as an information item?
If that's what the council member wants, we can just bring...
Is there consensus that you'd like to see them all together?
Well, what I asked for was Resolution 6384, which is the one about the city manager's limit to approve contracts. And the others are charter provision 107, 420 and 10, 10, 10.
And what do they pertain to?
Uh, well, the 1010 has to do with capital projects, uh, 107, I don't...
420 has to do with, um, I believe with items, expenditures that are in the approved budget. As I understood it, you wanted just an informational item that essentially provided copies of those documents to the council with a description of what they said.
Exactly. I, to be more precise, I wanted, I wanted, I wanted to go through each one of those items and discuss it with the council.
Then, we're happy to bring that back to you. Just wanted to comment, as a result of that request, we had folded that into our discussion with the city attorney's office on a potential procurement policy, but we'll bring the policy back.
That could, that could come later, though.
Yeah, we can do that.
That could come later.
Yeah, and we weren't discussing changing anything. We, as we started to look at your request, we realized there's a lot of different authority in a lot of different places.
Well, as an example, I'll give you one example. I don't think that the charter or any provision that we have in the city allows the city manager to call for a emergency and go ahead and make the payments. I think they can do that, but within a week, they gotta, they're gonna be back here. It's in the charter. You show me what's not in the charter and I'd be glad to back off, but I've read the charter and...
And, and understand the position and we'll bring the items forward and you can discuss what...
Because, uh, Joe, you may remember, there was a, there was a time when you had to build the berm and I think in the summer or something, and it was an emergency and I think you came to the council within a week. And that was appropriate and that was how it should be done, so. Anyway, that's, that's part of what I wanna go through.
And, and just, councilman, not to, not to belabor the point, one of the things we thought we could accomplish in a comprehensive procurement policy is resolve that question and, and have one document, rather than looking at three different sections of the charter and a resolution.
Well, the charter's the, the...
We'd have one document. If I could just finish the point, we'd have one document that, that filled it in, not changing anything, but putting all of those provisions into one document, which is standard in public agencies to have a comprehensive procurement policy. And we don't, unfortunately, don't, don't have that here. And so, the thought was to take those charter sections, to take the, the municipal code provisions related to purchasing, as well as a couple of resolutions. And I haven't been around long enough to understand why the resolutions were adopted rather than, um, adding a municipal code provision. The thought was to put everything into one comprehensive policy that could be in a, a notebook that everybody could refer to and not have these questions about, how does this section of the charter relate to that section of the charter? That, that was the, I'm not arguing with you.
The charter is the charter. Absolutely. I mean, so that doesn't matter, but sixty, as an example, 6384 came about because the city manager wanted the approval right to go and approve contracts up to the twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and have it escalate, just like the capital projects are escalated. Prior to that, the city manager had to bring all contracts to this council, which the subsequent city manager did. We had probably three times as many agenda items. But most of it was on the consent calendar and we knew things like we were procuring a, um, army car, as an example, for five thousand. But you just read it and, and you just approved it on a consent calendar, but you knew it. And, and I was mayor, actually, when we put this provision through and it seemed to make sense at the time. And I, I'm not even knocking that necessarily, I'm just, I'm not sure about the, the limit we have, but... But anyway, it's, that, that came about, that resolution came about, about in 2013. Before that, everything came to the council, everything. And so, that was streamlining the council. But, yeah, again, back to, there's nothing in the charter that says that city manager can have an emergency and run it on herself. The council has to decide, the majority of the council has to decide. So, I think that's why I wanted, I mean, mayor and I were about the rules and the rules are there. The charter's there. The, the municipal codes and any procedures have to flow from the charter.
Certainly, but if the charter doesn't address a particular subject, then you have to start looking around for where those rules might be. And we're not disagreeing on the primacy of the charter. And I'm not disagreeing with you at all, I'm just saying that...
Oh, you've disagreed with me on that particular topic several times. So, I think that's why I wanted to, you know, till we have an agreement on what, what, what the charter says, that's why I asked for it, so we could look at it and discuss what it says. And I tried to pick out the provisions that would do that.
Mayor, I have a question regarding, how long will it take you to be able to bring everything back together?
I can't really give you a timeframe right now. If, if, um, the pleasure of the council is to bring the items back with respect to what Councilman Miller's requesting, we can bring those back to you at the next meeting. But I can't, until I've talked with staff and worked with the city attorney's office, I can't give you an estimated timeframe on a procurement policy right now.
Well, I think that the idea, what you're going for is to have a comprehensive procurement policy and this, the discussion we may have here, uh, might be resolved with your procurement. Therefore, it seems to me that the logical thing is to bring them together, unless you just want an informational item with no action. But you want action.
Well, what I wanna do is, I think if we do the charter and we do, um, Resolution 6384, that will give her enough guidance that she can do what she wants to do, I think. I think that can follow because we're looking at the, the golden rules, if you will. These are the rules and whatever we develop from there, we'll follow.
Let me clarify something. She, meaning the city count, the, uh, city manager, doesn't do what she wants to do. She is governed by the charter, the rules of the community, of the city. So she is not doing what she wants to do. Poor choice of words.
Everybody is under the, at least I felt like this entire council, other than me, was under the, the illusion, if you will, I'll call it, that the city manager can call an emergency and do whatever she wants and go forward. And I'm telling you, that's not how it is. And, and there's even a provision in the municipal code that says if we have a disaster, that it can be called an emergency for seven days and this council has to decide that it's an emergency in seven days or it's not an emergency anymore. I mean, there's rules, you gotta read the books and read the stuff to see it, but they're there. And I found nothing, 'cause I've been there looking. I've found nothing that says the city manager can just declare an emergency. And that's the end of it, go forward.
I don't think it's unusual for the city to have the city manager doing something like that. But in any case, I'd like to see all that data that you're requesting.
And that's why I've requested.
And then make a decision of how to proceed.
Yeah, as an example, as Dr. Goldberg mentioned tonight, if we look at 6384 and we decide that maybe we don't wanna have this moving limit like we do on capital projects for the city manager, maybe we wanna set it at fifteen thousand or we wanna set it at something else and have a constant. Or we wanna do it after the whole resolution totally. But that would give her guidance then how to develop her policies and procedures. That's why I think we can go ahead with my agenda item and let that, let her work off whatever we agree to as she develops her policies and procedures or corrects them or whatever's wrong with them. I mean, a lot of the policies, I, I don't get beyond the municipal codes, so anything they have for policies. I, I don't think we have policy books, do we, Joe?
We have council policies and administrative policies.
Okay, so we do have...
The administrative policies, the city manager approves at the staff level. The council policies are approved by this body.
Do we have those? The administrative policies?
Should have them.
Of course.
That's in one of my boxes, okay. It's online, I think, too, probably. Okay, anyway, where was I? I, that's in the mic. I just reminded, we have a couple of agenda items. I'd like to still have those.
Okay. Is it the, your purpose to have this on an open session, council, and we discuss it there?
Yeah.
Or can we, uh, take this information, absorb it if we possibly can, and, um, discuss it at a closed session and then make a decision whether, what we wanna do?
I don't think it's...
There's no, there's no closed session.
Okay. Then do you want it on...
Agenda there.
Yeah, I just wanna discuss it and, and, and there's my question. You'll bring it to us next two weeks from now. Show us how you can call an emergency. That's all.
I would, I'd like to give the staff a little more time. I'd like to give them a month.
We've had two weeks already.
We can bring, we can bring the item that Councilmember Miller is asking for in two weeks.
In two weeks?
He's asked us to compile documents and present them to the council and we can do that. I, I mean, now, but he's now talking about potentially changing the city manager's limit and doing other things. If, if the expectation is that there's gonna be an action item in two weeks, we don't know what the action would be. So if you want just an informational item, we can certainly provide that, um, in, at the next council meeting, but there wouldn't be any...
Why don't we make that the first step?
What's that, Sandra?
The informational items. Oh, okay. Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you, that's it.
Ms. Deaton?
Well, after that, I'd just like to say, the weather has been really beautiful. And the people have come to the beach and I have thoroughly enjoyed having summer in the middle of February. And if you remember at the last meeting, we had a woman who came and complained about the conditions of the restrooms. And I just want everyone to know that the very next morning, the city manager and I went down to both the restrooms and they were, in fact, in great condition. So, I think that our biggest problem is during the high use times. And I just would like for the city manager to tell us, how do we deal, um, Ms. Ingram, when we have high population over the weekends and everything? What should people expect on the cleanliness of the restrooms at that point?
So I'll start with Jim Basham, our director of community development, since Michael Ho's not here tonight, 'cause I know Michael's been working with our janitorial service to address it. And then Joe Bailey may have some additional comments as well. Jim?
Thank you. And, again, Madam Mayor, city council. So immediately after the, uh, the concern that was brought to our attention, we took action. So in regards to the public work staff, um, we are in the process of purchasing some equipment that will allow us to sanitize the bathrooms. We will be part of the beach crew that would be, um, conducting that sanitation. We also are going to start with community services department. When there is a large nonprofit or organization that's asking to use the beach, that they also have to provide a cleaning deposit, if you will, that will allow the city to utilize our sanitary, our janitorial services so that they can be on staff during the entire time that the activity is taking place, ensuring that the bathrooms are maintained clean and that we have sufficient supplies. So, um, so far, we've, we've made some changes inside. We're ordering some new, um, bathroom facilities, if you will, equipment, accessory items that are necessary inside the bathroom. And we're keeping back orders stock at the yard as well. So we are taking action. I think it's working so far in that regard. Um, so, so far, we're taking a proactive approach in that regard.
Was that issued just at the pier or was that river's end, too?
We went to both.
Okay, 'cause river's end, I thought it was a restaurant's responsibility to maintain that.
It is. Yes, it is.
But I do think that we need to be very cognizant when we have a lot of people coming to the beach that even though they go through every hour, is that correct? That they go through every hour is what I was told?
Yes, but we're gonna have a staff person actually gonna be on staff, attending the bathrooms during these high, um, generation time periods, especially on the weekends.
Okay, I, I think that's a great idea because, uh, visitors just do not take care of our facilities the way we here in town take care of them. So I appreciate it, thank you. And that's all I have, thank you. Mr. Vera Papa?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to, um, request some information, too, as long as we're asking for information to be shared, um, in the near future about the, uh, last two weekends, Caltrans and the toll road. I'm not waiting anytime soon, but in the next four to six weeks, if we could just get maybe a brief, um, update for the public, um, information and knowledge, uh, specifically what we're seeking and hoping to get and cost to date and threshold, if you will, and any other information you can share, because I think that was another, um, important issue that's affecting our city and we need to kind of be updated about. So if you can provide something four to six, eight weeks, is that doable?
Sure. Are you asking for a, um, report that's available to the public or a privileged report?
About to the public. I think the public should be aware of where we are as a city and what, you know, what funding we're using and how we're spending it and what, what we're hoping to gain out of it. Just an update, because six, eight months have gone by and I know a lot of information and activities have gone by with OCTA and Caltrans and we need to know where we're at with this, so.
Sure, we'll do a public, we'll do a public report.
Thank you.
Excuse me, could I ask for a privileged report, please, so that we can know better where we are in the lawsuit at this point? Sure. Thank you.
But I think that Vera Papa would be excluded from that, being a person that has taken himself out of that.
Which is why he asked for the public report.
I know.
We're aware of that.
The public report, I don't think can go as far as he's asking.
We're, we're aware of that, Mr. Miller, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Sloan?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to thank our city clerk, Robert Roberts, for the job she's doing for us. I know that, uh, it's a very complex job and I thought there'd be a learning curve. There, there doesn't seem to be a learning curve. Seems like you just jumped in and hit the road running and, uh, it's like you've been here all your life. So, thank you so much for everything you do and, uh, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Job well done. Last week, um, I had my very first Ask the Mayor meeting. Uh, I placed it in, in Leisure World, uh, in the hospitality center, where many people, couple hundred people a morning congregate so that I would be available to answer questions, most pertaining to the pier and, uh, what we're doing with it and how it's coming along and why we don't have a restaurant yet and the usual questions. It worked out very well. There were a couple of dozen people that asked questions specifically and others just kinda hung around the table, just listening to questions and answers and talking to each other and it was a real good opportunity to have a feeling for what, uh, what people are thinking. And while this one was in Leisure World, many, the rest of the city could not stand, even if they wanted to, unless I called them all in. But I will be having Ask the Mayor, uh, little meetings at maybe Pete's. I haven't talked to any of these places yet. So I don't know where it will be, but I'm thinking Pete's Coffee and Rossmore Shops and across the street, maybe at Starbucks or maybe the Starbucks up here. and across the street, maybe at Starbucks, or maybe the Starbucks up here. You know, getting around town and asking different people from different districts what they feel is important, and we can have fun doing it. It was really quite fun. And that concludes my report. The consent calendar. Now, we are going to vote on A, B, C, and F on the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Please vote. Five to zero. And we'll go back to the items that were removed. You want to go through D again, which is a quarterly report of the city manager's authorized contracts?
Right, I do. Because I pulled it for a different reason. One of the reasons I pulled it was, was exactly that paragraph that seemed confusing about the meetings, because I didn't know where we were going with that particular item. I didn't want it to get confused with what I had asked for, so as you can see, we've kind of addressed that. I found that Dr. Goldberg's inquiry about the pavement management plan and the traffic study, I guess I, before I didn't know those were out there, and I haven't seen that contract, so I guess this being below the twenty-eight thousand eight hundred, the council doesn't see that contract. But the deliverables, I guess, therefore, we don't know when the deliverables were supposed to be. Do you know when the deliverables were for those two contracts?
What are you talking about? What contract?
Oh, the pavement, I said the pavement management man, plan and the traffic survey.
So Mayor, if I could, I'll ask Jim Basham to address this item, although I know our Deputy Public Works Director, Michael Ho, I believe, has been on the staff oversight of all three of these items. Jim?
Yes, thank you.
Just a moment, Mr. Basham. I asked you if you wanted to talk about D.
That's what I'm talking about. I mean, D.
D is the quarterly report of the city manager's authorized contracts.
Yes.
He's talking about deliverables from two of those contracts that are listed there.
Okay, I misunderstood.
So we can provide you an update in regards to the three items that are, that were under professional services, and that allow the associate engineer, Dave Spitz, to provide you with the actual contents of that scope of services for all three items.
Thank you, Jim. The first one through Buckman Infrastructure Group is for the 2016 Pavement Management Report. We are required as a city to produce a report to OCTA every two years, and we are one of the cities that are on the biannual with the even years, so we are currently producing this report. The anticipated date to bring it before council would be around April 2016, and it is due to OCTA by June 30th. The second item for Albert Grover and Associates is the 2015 Engineering and Traffic Surveys. That's the official name. The kind of unofficial name to that is speed surveys. It's that time where the city has to study and bring forth a report to council to approve all our, all our, like, non-local and non-articular roads, or our arterial roads and our collector roads for approval, so that our police department can use radar to enforce the speeds there. And the third item with AKM Consulting Engineers is for a West End Pump Station VFD and Sun Pump Replacement Project. That is the design agreement to have AKM design a replacement of a VFD and Sun Pump at our West End Pump Station. That project is currently, I say under construction, it's under material procurement, and construction is anticipated to begin in, right after the rainy season ends, so right around April 2016.
Okay, so those deliverables are not till later. When was the speed survey? When does, when does that come to the council? Speed survey?
Um, it is just about complete, so I think we are anticipating bringing it possibly March or April.
Well, will the pavement management plan be one of those that we review and decide if we're the right roads, or it'll come to the council for approval?
That's right.
Yeah, I, I, I ask because the, believe it or not, the speed survey, I've had constituents complain when, when speeds have gone up, and they always go up, they never seem to go down, so it's an important one. Regarding this particular item, you know, there's not many contracts here. I would suggest, Ms. City Manager, that any contracts you sign below twenty-eight thousand eight hundred, why not put them on this list? I mean, it looked like, it looked when I read this, like you were thinking about trying to create, make them more complicated than they need to be, and I was just thinking, any contract that come in under twenty-eight thousand eight hundred, just put it down on the list.
So Mayor, if I could verify with our Finance Director, and, and Council, if you recall, this is an item that I brought to you as a recommendation on my own behalf to increase transparency. Unfortunately, it seems to be providing more confusion, which is why staff had the meeting that we had with the City Attorney's Office a couple weeks ago. If I could, Vicki, and every item, every contract, any and all contract that I sign is going to be reported on this quarterly report. That was the intent of the report. So Vicki, if you could confirm for me, please, that any contract that's signed under my authority eventually gets on a quarterly report?
At the, Ms. City Manager, Mayor, members of the council, at this point, yes, until we have further discussion and clarification about the purpose of this report and the actual documents, that's the intent. To have everything, regardless of whether or not it's budgeted, that is signed by the city manager, to be on this list, for contracts.
Okay. Again, when I read that last paragraph under the staff report, it started getting confusing, and I thought, and again, it is your report, Ms. City Manager. You created it. I just thought, it just seemed like it'd be easiest just to list every contract, then there's no issues, and we don't have to try to figure out whether it, I think the word was, I won't have to figure out if it's a operational agreement or a discretionary agreement. It just do it and...
Is there something that you can recommend we can do different? Because from my perspective, we're listing the contractor, the purpose, and what the dollar amount was.
No, it's just, again, it looked like confusion when I started reading all the words. I thought, I thought your basic premise originally was the best one, just every contract I sign, I'll, I'll put on there. And there aren't that many. We have three here, and I think we had two or three before the last one, so...
Well, I'm always happy to shorten a staff report, so that'd be quite simple to do. My intent, though, was to increase transparency, so that's, that's the purpose of trying to provide more of a description.
Fine. It's your, it's this particular one is your report, so, thank you. I, I move this item.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Five to zero. Item D?
D. Item E?
D, sorry.
B.
Um...
Item E. I, I just had some questions.
Actually, David Spitz is here, Associate Engineer. David, if you want to just give a brief summary of the item, and then staff's more than happy to address any questions. David?
Thank you, City Manager, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is the Notice of Completion for the Local Street Resurfacing Program. What this is, is the city's annual local street resurfacing, intended to repave certain streets and point repairs from sidewalk and curb and gutter as identified by the most recent pavement management plan on file with the city. This project, the streets that were repaired, were Eleventh Street from Electric to Landing, Thirteenth Street from Electric to PCH, Balboa from Bolsa to Catalina, Harbor from Bayside to Bayou, and Silver Shoals from Bolsa to Fathom. And this project's now complete, and staff is requesting that City Council adopt Resolution 6620 to accept the local street resurfacing program project by all American asphalt as complete, and direct the city clerk to file the notice of completion with the county recorder's office. If anybody has any question, we'll be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I have questions. My question was, first of all, who made the final inspection and who made the inspections while the project was going on, projects were going on?
Probably Public Works Staff and Public Works Inspection.
Okay. Because I, I've heard that Tom Christoliss is no longer with us, and he's been doing the projects. Originally, it was some gentleman named Har, Harland Chit, Chitson River, and, and then Tom Christoliss has been doing it since, like, 2009, and I've heard he's left the city, and so I'm just wondering, how, how are we going to do the next step? I mean, it's a complicated process.
So that's a very good question. I'm glad you asked that. So you are correct, our consultant that we were using is no longer with the city. So with public works projects, the engineers who are certified to do the work, and it was questioned as to whether or not the activities had worn in the past, being done properly, but that's a different issue. What we're concerned about is ensuring that the engineers are taking a look at the scope of services and also making the inspections. When it comes to inspections on site, the Building Division staff is making the drainage and grading inspections. So until something further occurs in regards to how I would, I will allow the responsibilities to be separated, and who will oversee the project. So far, it's working just fine, and it's saving the city quite a bit of money.
Well, I know that based on my training back when I first came on council, when you do a resurfacing, you got, you grind, and you, there's got to be somebody on site to make sure that grinding is done properly. You have to seal it, you have to put certain temperatures on it, you have to have certain compaction, you have to roll it, and, and I would hate to waste an engineer on that when we can't even get our projects done like on the pier, and maybe other projects we're behind time. It seems like it's not an engineer's job, based on everything I've seen in my eight years on council, so it's like, you know, I, I guess, again, City Manager, I think it's time to start talking about whether we're going to have a public works department or not, so...
So Madam Mayor, can I address that question? If that's possible?
I don't know that this is the appropriate time to discuss whether or not we should have a public works department.
I just toss that in. My, my issue is that it's a complicated process, and it's not one where you go out and, well, you're, you're, you're an engineer, you know about this. You don't, I don't know if you send your engineers to do all your inspections, maybe you do, but they're, they're costly engineers.
A large percentage of our work is done by licensed civil engineers, but it could be done by inspectors, too, so I would leave that up to the special, the public works department. Hopefully, they're taking the right, you know, direction and doing, doing the right thing, and I think with the consultant's help is the best way to go about it, right? So you have a consultant on board.
We do plan on addressing that through the budgetary process, and it will be a very good opportunity for me to address that, that saves the city money and bring around a permanent staff person. Right now, I don't have a choice. The work is being done with engineers. They don't spend all day. It's not necessary to have an employee at a location the entire day sitting there and looking at them grind asphalt.
I, I have one comment that I would like to make, just to make you aware of it, and that is, I have noticed that wherever the surveyors put their survey equipment in the middle of the street, that there are now holes down the middle of our street that have gradually worn away, and there are a lot of them. And I am just wondering, doesn't that then allow the water in, and doesn't that then destroy our subsurface? And I know sometimes I've called to find out who the surveyors are, and we don't know, because anybody can just go out there and set up survey equipment and then damage our roads. Do, is that anything that's ever come to your attention?
Yeah, yeah, we, we see that periodically. We try and work with the local surveyors to either, A, not damage the road, or B, fix it when they're done. But as you mentioned, a lot of times, they just come in, do their survey work, and leave, and we don't know who's responsible for that.
Well, Fifth and Central is now huge. It started out little, and I reported it, and then now it's absolutely huge, and there are a number of others. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I called last week, and I was going to talk about it, and I got sidetracked on something else. But I, I'm just really concerned, we put a lot of money into those streets, and I'm worried that the water will get down there and then undermine the bed. Thank you.
I guess I'd only conclude by, after eight years on the council and watching many constructions on the streets and resurfacing, and some of them got awful, where they mixed dirt with lime, with, I don't even know if any of our engineers were here, Michael was here. It was quite a, quite a catastrophe, as the trucks got stuck and all kinds of problems. But I mean, I, I'll just leave it at that. I think, I'll, I'll just leave it at that for now. I'll cover it later. Anyway, I move the item.
Second. Please vote. Five to zero. Okay. There are no public hearings this evening. Unfinished and continued business is pier improvement status report.
No.
While there is no action, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll ask our Community Development Director, Jim Basham, to provide an update for you tonight. Jim?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, if you may recall, the past couple of meetings, we've been analyzing a number of hard CIP projects, and what started that whole process of analyzing the projects citywide is the pier. So at the last meeting, or in the first meeting of the year, January of 2016, City Council received an overview in regards to the mandatory or emergency repairs that are necessary for the pier. Part of the direction from the City Council was for staff to come back, provide those costs for the pier emergency repair, but also if we can include costs that's associated with the bathroom being installed. So after the meeting, I, we met, staff met, and we discussed not only what City Council asked, but also the possibility of looking at alternatives to save the city costs and the installation of a dedicated fire line. So one of the options is to put the fire line above the deck instead of below the deck. What we've learned just over the emergency repairs with the fire line is it is very, very labor-intensive and very costly for, to have an emergency break with the fire line right now, currently, and to bring the crew on the, on the deck, remove the decking, try to save the deck from splitting, because the, the deck piles and also the, the planks are very expensive. So what we've noticing is the screws are also stripping, and the repair and the time for a crew and a contractor to get out there and to replace the line is, it could be several days, for a line that's only fifteen feet long for which we need to replace. So we've had an opportunity to take a look at alternative costs, and we believe that we will be able to bring to you an option in regards to the fire line being installed above ground, which obviously would cut our costs down for installation, but also for long-term purposes, for, for which we need to analyze on CIP projects, is the cost savings that the city will certainly appreciate over time. So we receive those additional costs from our engineering firm, and we'll be, we're able to bring that back to you after the next meeting, February 22nd. So staff is asking us to give us that additional time to come back to you and present to you the, the costs for the emergency repairs and also for bathroom, but we'll also bring you the additional costs in regards to what happens from that point forward. So staff would ask if you would give staff additional time in order for us to bring back those numbers.
One question, Jim. The fire line is only fifteen feet, you're telling me?
No, sir. The last break that we had, we had to repair a fifteen line portion of it because it was corroded and it was leaking, but it took us a full day, a full crew, in order just to remove the planking, in order to get below the surface of the, of the deck to reach that line.
Thank you. I, I thought I misread on that.
No, the, the fire line actually goes from the, from one end of the pier to the other.
For an old fireman, I want that line to start off to the end of the pier.
Absolutely.
Uh, Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
A couple of questions. What, what is the firefighting plan for the pier? We don't drive the fire truck onto the pier, do we?
Um, I don't know if OCSA have had to drive the vehicle across the deck, but if they need to, they can. We do have stationary locations where we can set up fire lines. There are fire lines right now that they can connect to.
What's the weight of the vehicle? I mean...
I don't know. I could, if there's not an OCSA person here, I can't tell you.
Because there, there was a limit inside of one of those reports that limited the weight going on that pier, and I would imagine a truck would be more than that weight. I can't remember, it was like fourteen thousand, was it, or?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Okay.
I think Chief Bailey might be able to add to that.
Is he here?
Councilmember Miller.
Oh.
We train with the OCSA usually around every two years for pier fires, and the plan is actively that the, the OCSA engines stay at the base of the pier. Lifeguard trucks are used to transport men and equipment, and ladies, I'm sorry, to the, wherever the fire is.
Because that holds it out.
And that is, the firefighting plan is from water, you know, there's, Long Beach has a firefighting vessel, Sheriff's have a firefighting vessel, and then the OCSA from the pier side.
Okay, so we, we will take it up by the, the lifeguard trucks to the...
That's not the plan, correct.
Okay, so we will take it out by the lifeguard trucks to the, that's the plan, correct?
The other question I have is, how, what would the line look like if it was above on top of the deck?
It wouldn't be, it would probably flash or going along the edge of the deck.
On the outside of the rails?
Yes, it would be fully encased and protected.
Okay.
Wouldn't keep the fire, the fishermen from fishing.
Absolutely not.
God forbid.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to await a longer date?
That question, Madam Mayor? How long, Jim, are we looking at? Because the residents are really wondering, when are we moving on this?
If city council authorizes to move forward, after the February 22nd, we will start immediately and seeking out contractors for bids.
Oh, so you're ready to come back next meeting with your report?
Yes, yes, we are. So then we can, we can seek out bids, we'll bring back to you the bid specs if they exceed the amount for which we're presenting to you at the February 22nd, because if, at the February 22nd, if city council gives us a blessing to utilize the funds that will come from the appropriation, then we can move forward based upon the total funds amount that the city council approve us, approve for the project. If for some reason, once we get the bid specifications back and they're higher, then we'll come back to you, obviously. If they're lower, there's no reason unless city council asks to see the bid, but we will proceed immediately from that point forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Couple of questions. State lands commission, did we ever get the agreement yet?
We're, we're working on it. There's a few line items that they're asking before they finalize it.
We'd want to do no, but no work on the pier before we have that finished, right?
I don't see why we couldn't proceed.
I don't think we want it to burn down first.
Well, I'm just thinking that, what do we only have, our contract only goes to this year or something?
We have no indication that the state lands commission is going to do anything other than extend the contract or the lease agreement, if you will, for long-term purposes.
Yeah, but before you invest $3 million, you want to know that, that you have all the ducks in line.
The part of our contract obligation is to maintain the pier for which we're preferring that obligation.
Again, I wouldn't, well, it's a technicality, but if you don't have a contract, I wouldn't, you know, maybe that's a good reason for them to give us the contract.
I doubt that they would give up the pier to us, so nothing's going to change. It's just a formality.
The other, the other question I've had, because I was looking back at something, we spent like $60,000 at one point to redo this building that now we're told can't be redone. It's kind of like, well, how did we ever decide the first time we could redo the building? Wasn't it $60,000 we spent to, to go in and fix the rubies up like a few years back and all of a sudden it can't be refurbished or whatever?
If I recall, approximately maybe 18 months ago, when we were deep in negotiations, there were some emergency repairs we had to do to the building because it was basically in disrepair. And once rubies vacated the premises, there was a lot of exposure to the surface floor for which we've identified has this material. So we declared the structural state of emergency for the purpose of us moving forward to remediate the building for that purpose.
Okay, so it had nothing to do with the building being usable, it was just because it was hazardous materials inside the building, we had closed?
There was substantial amount of hazardous material for which we needed to contain and to evacuate from the premises.
Okay, thank you.
Was there any structural work done just for, as I remember, there was some structural work that was done just for safety?
We needed to stabilize the building, yes, because of the subfloor, there were some areas where the, there was holes that lead to the below-deck area.
I wouldn't have recalled, I wouldn't have called it a remodel.
I wouldn't have.
We wouldn't, we won't have this go, we won't start construction though it comes back to council, right? I didn't misunderstand you, do you think it's under a certain amount of, are you going to start? Because we haven't approved any, well, I'm just asking.
No, it's going to come back to us.
Okay.
Next meeting.
Maybe.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Jim, could you possibly let us know at that time if the other cities that are doing that with the water line outside, you know, just maybe just do some research and maybe provide some schematics and some visuals and, you know, the size and proportion, because I think it becomes an aesthetic issue, but it'd be nice just to kind of see it as a cross section or view where and how and what, and anything else is doing. I'm sure other cities have been looking at it and possibly do a certain kind of look into it.
We can, we can. A lot of cities have, have basically, are no longer using wood piers, they're on concrete. So, you know, it's no comparison in that regard, yeah.
Well, I think just a schematic of what you think it's going to look like or how, you know, so we can kind of prepare. I did notice that Huntington Beach is in fact a concrete pier, and they have it...
Yes.
A utility dock, if you will, right down the center of the bridge, it's really nice for them, obviously, but, yeah, so if you have any other examples, it'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you. So Mayor, if I could, just to summarize?
Yes.
The council will recall, when we had the discussion on the CIP and low, medium, and high priority projects, the council gave us direction to come back with cost estimates on pier improvements, and at that time, we indicated we could come back to you by February 8th. So I asked the staff to bring this update to you, since this is the February 8th council meeting, and I know especially Councilwoman Deaton sent out information to her constituencies since they have, especially have a strong interest in this, but because we wanted to take the extra step to potentially save the city some money, that's the reason why we needed an extra council meeting to get that update to you. We'll bring a cost estimate to you on February 22nd, and then based on council direction at that time, we would start the contracting RFP bidding process at that time. So no construction will begin until we've gone through our typical construction process.
Thank you. While the next, all right, let's say there is no new business, and the next item would be adjourned, however, here is another meeting. It's called a successor agency. So I will adjourn the city council meeting to Monday, February 22nd, 2016, at 5:30 to meet and close session if deemed necessary. And I'd like to call to order the successor agency for the city of Seal Beach. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Masal Abit.
Here.
Vice Chair Barapapa.
Here.
Member Deaton.
Here.
Member Sloan.
Here.
Member Miller. All present.
Thank you. Oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the agency regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the agency. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the agency cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the agency's discretion, be referred to the executive director and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the agency secretary for distribution. The next item on the agenda is a consent calendar, and they are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. Is there, are there any items to be removed at request of a council member? Okay, do we have a motion on the consent calendar? I'd like to move approval, please. Second? Is there a second?
Seven.
Please vote. Five to zero. And I would like now to adjourn this successor agency to Monday, April 25th, 2016, immediately following the city council meeting. Good night.